Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'm Diane Gorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's meeting of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Commissioners Benjamin Bozorg, Sirulo, Crowell, Dweck, Kirmani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. Thank you all for being here. We expect a few others to join us in a moment or two. I will note it is a bit of an uncommon week for us at the City Planning Commission in that we have no public hearings scheduled for Wednesday. So today, after our normal review session, we're going to have a special public meeting to vote on several proposals. And to save staff resources and all of your time, we will not meet on Wednesday of this week. More on the projects that will start public review and receive votes shortly. First, though, I wanted to take a moment to focus our attention on the current conversation that is happening in Albany about housing and housing creation. In that vein, I wanted to urge the state legislature to approve Governor Hochul's ambitious housing compact this week, and that includes its mandatory targets for local jurisdictions and fast-track approvals. We need these tools to enable us to achieve New York City's 500,000-unit goal over the next decade. This is critical. There is no way out of our housing crisis without a statewide planning framework for building homes. And when we build more homes, we reduce the enormous burdens that New Yorkers are facing on housing costs, gentrification, homelessness, and we allow us to become a more inclusive and successful city and region. Transit-oriented development around train stations also critically important. It's exactly where we should be developing new housing in order to lower housing costs to boost our economy and also to bring ridership back to the MTA. We also desperately need other relief in the governor's budget that she is championing to allow more housing creation and to make the city more affordable. This includes extending a tax incentive to support the creation of 32,000 homes that are already in the construction pipeline, many of which would be affordable. Without the incentive, we limit much of the hard work we have already done to get these homes ready for New Yorkers. And we need Albany to lift the 12-FAR cap, which prevents our creating opportunities to deliver affordable housing in some of the highest opportunity areas of the city, the state, and nation. Council Speaker Adrian Adams and I penned an op-ed just last week asking that the cap, which limits the construction of apartment buildings to no more than 12 times the size of the lot that they sit on, be lifted. State legislators should enable New York City's local elected representatives to make zoning decisions and to bring more housing where they believe it is appropriate. The 12-FAR cap is an artificial limit that has long outlived its usefulness. Give us the ability to make our own determinations, and we will handle it carefully. Finally, we also need action to facilitate office-to-residential conversions. This is a win-win to turn underutilized office space into affordable housing, but to get there, we need to change regulations about which buildings can be converted and also set up a tax incentive to create affordable housing as part of those conversions. So in sum, I hope that we will find a path forward in Albany to approve the governor's pro-equity and pro-housing agenda. Shifting gears, I want to thank everyone who attended our public information session last week on the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality and encourage more New Yorkers to join our second public information session tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. For information about how to join us, go to nyc.gov/engage. City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality, a priority of Mayor Adams, seeks to modernize our zoning resolution and help us reduce New York City's reliance on fossil fuels. Also, New Yorkers can get more involved in a once-in-a-generation opportunity to reimagine the Cross Bronx Expressway. This collaborative study, which is being led by City Planning and the state and city departments of transportation, looks to create a community vision to minimize the harm that the Cross Bronx has caused to nearby neighborhoods, and will kick off with remote and in-person meetings over the next couple of weeks. It starts with a remote meeting on Thursday, March 30th, at 6:00, followed by an in-person meeting at Bronx River Art Center on Saturday, April 1. Details on all five upcoming events can also be found on nyc.gov/engage. Sticking to the Bronx, Mayor Adams announced a plan to expand the Harlem River Greenway to the Borough with seven miles of open space from Randall's Island to Van Cortlandt Park. The Department of City Planning's comprehensive waterfront plan emphasized the importance of equitably expanding waterfront access, and this is a great example of how this administration is linking more New Yorkers with their shoreline. As seen from the fantastic photos of that announcement, our executive director, Edith Su Chen, who is right behind you, was one of the stars of the show as she joined Mayor Adams for a bike ride on the High Bridge beforehand. Now, before we move to today's agenda, I wanted to note that we have been joined by Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Goodrich, and I am delighted to be able to say that you will hear from our Brooklyn planners in several weeks' time about our initial planning work for downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene that we are calling Eds and Meds. This is an opportunity for city planning and the local community, including the NYCHA residents at Farragut, Ingersoll, and Whitman Houses, to help express the city's priorities and guide any future private land use applications in this area going forward. And to be clear, it is not a rezoning. It is a framework developed by the department as a way to send a signal to public and private interests about what is important to us. We look forward to lots of future discussions with community and agency partners about the entire area, and we will share the framework with this commission before long. For today's regular review session agenda, we have opportunities for new homes, new open space, supermarkets, and even more starting public review. We'll start with a proposed building with 30 homes, around 12 of them income-restricted, ground-floor retail in Astoria, just blocks from the Steinway Street commercial corridor and the M&amp;R trains. This is 42-1831st Avenue rezoning. In East Harlem, Manhattan, at 244 East 106th Street, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development is advancing a new residential building with 32 apartments that will be part of SHARE NYC. This pilot uses a shared housing model in which housing units consist of two or more independently occupied rooms that share a kitchen and a bathroom. It's another way that New York City is thinking outside the box to create new housing for all types of lifestyles. Also in East Harlem, at 180 East 125th Street, we have a fresh authorization on the docket, another example of this program's ongoing success in bringing healthy foods to underserved communities. The commission will also hear about a residential building under construction at 262 Fifth Avenue near Madison Square Park that is seeking a special permit to increase the number of parking spaces from five to 23. And in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, the Greenpoint Landing Development is pursuing land use actions to achieve its required waterfront public access area for New Yorkers to enjoy. The open space would include picnic areas, seating, viewing steps, and a lounge area along the pier and more. Public space is a much-needed amenity. We look forward to hearing more about this proposal. There are requests for a couple of authorizations from the commission that we're going to be talking about today. After our review session, we'll hold our special public meeting to vote on several proposals. Most notable of the new housing projects the commission will vote on today is a 100% affordable development with over 330 homes, a new supermarket and community facility at 2560 Boston Road in Allerton, the Bronx. We'll also vote on a three-apartment building at 155 18th Street in Park Slope, Brooklyn, and a South Jamaica, Queens project at 141-05109th Avenue, which has around 55 new homes, 15 of them, approximately 15 of them permanently income-restricted. Finally, we will vote on the renewal of an office lease for the city's Human Resources Administration at 88 Third Avenue in Borum Hill, Brooklyn. This space is used to administer SNAP and Medicaid benefits, among many others, to New Yorkers in need. It's certainly a packed agenda. I thank you all for the indulgence in a slightly longer-than-usual opening statement here, but I hope we're getting the week started on the right foot. And with that, Ryan, I'm going to turn to you to get us started on the agenda.
Certainly. So this is the review session for the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, March 27, 2023. The time is 1:12 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room at 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District 1. Our presenter is Teal Daly. I'll note that Commissioner Rampershead is recused on this item.
Hi, Teal.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be presenting 4218 31st Avenue for certification. The private applicant, 4218 Development LLC, is requesting a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment for three blocks in the Astoria neighborhood of Queens, Community District 2. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change an R5 district with a C12 overlay to a R6 district, sorry, R6A district with a C13 overlay and an R5 district. The applicant also requests a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area, and these actions will facilitate a new six-story, approximately 38,000 square-foot residential building with a commercial ground floor. The project area is located in eastern Astoria and is highlighted in pink on the aerial map. Steinway is a primary commercial corridor in Astoria and is characterized by retail, office, and residential uses in buildings that range from two to six stories, and this corridor is shown by the red line on the map, which is located about three blocks to the west of the project area. Commercial uses extend for several blocks beyond Steinway Street to the block ends of 31st Avenue and within the project area. The midblocks are characterized by two-story detached and semi-attached townhomes. Larger multifamily pre-war apartments also exist in the area and are concentrated along wider streets and block ends. The M&amp;R trains are accessible via 46th Street Station, which is located a quarter mile to the southeast of the project area, as well as the Steinway Station located approximately a half a mile southwest of the project area. The N&amp;W trains are accessible about a mile to the west of the project area at Broadway Station. Three buses are accessible with routes to Roosevelt Island, Massapeff, and Sunnyside. Institutional uses in the area include three schools, and these are comprised of an elementary school, which is located one block to the north of the project area, a middle school located three blocks east, as well as a high school located six blocks to the southeast. Limited open space exists in the area and is comprised of Shawn's Playground, which is a playground located three blocks to the west, as well as a playground and a sportsfield that are coupled with IS-10 Horace Greeley Middle School and William Colan Bryant High School, respectively. And this aerial shows the project area, and we're actually facing south. The project area is located on a three-way intersection of 31st Avenue, 43rd Street, and Newtown Road. This is a very wide intersection characterized by one- to four-story buildings with residential and commercial uses, including restaurants, a gas station, and an auto detailing center. As indicated by yellow on the map, the surrounding area is predominantly residential, and commercial uses are shown in red. Commercial uses are clustered along Steinway and Broadway corridors, as well as the block ends of 31st Avenue. Institutional uses are shown in blue and show the locations of the nearby public schools that I already mentioned. The dotted black line shows the project area, which is comprised of blocks 692, 693, and 694, and has a total of approximately 46,500 square feet in area. The development site is located on block 692 and is comprised of approximately 10,800 square feet in area. On the map, this is shown in the dashed red line. The development site is improved with a 4,500-square-foot two-story commercial building, a 2,000-square-foot two-story residential building, and a 1,600-square-foot one-story commercial building. South of the development site, the remainder of block 692 contains several two-story residential townhomes. Block 693 is improved with seven three-story multifamily walk-up buildings and two two-story residential buildings. Block 694 is improved with a gas station and a one-story office building. And I'll walk through several site photos, and I'll start from the west and pan over to the east of the development site. This first photo shows a view of the development site facing west from the intersection of 31st Avenue, 43rd Street, and Newtown Road. This photo shows a view looking down 43rd Street, and we're facing southwest, and the development site is to the right, and block 693 within the project area is to the left in the photo. And this photo shows views of blocks 693 and 694, which are both in the project area facing southeast from the wide intersection. And this photo shows part of the project area to the right, which is the gas station on block 694, and then to the left on the photo shows one of the pre-war multifamily buildings. In this case, it's four stories tall, and this is not in the project area. And finally, this photo is a view facing north from the project area to show how wide the intersection is and what the character of the intersection is from the perspective of the project area. The proposed development has a total, it's proposed to have a total of 38,189 total square feet of area. This would include 8,000 square feet of commercial floor area and 30,189 square feet of residential floor area. There would be a total of 33 dwelling units, 10 to 12 of which would be affordable, and the applicant is proposing accessory parking in the cellar. The building would have a four-story base height, or 45 feet, and a 65-foot or six-story maximum height. The building would have 3.53 FAR. This site plan shows the ground floor plan. As I mentioned, there would be 8,000 square feet of residential uses, and there would be entrances to the residential, I'm sorry, 8,000 square feet of commercial uses, commercial retail, with entrances on 31st Avenue and 43rd Street. There would also be residential entrances on 31st Avenue and 43rd Street, and there's an existing curb cut that would remain in place on 43rd Street and provide access to parking in the cellar. Looking at the cellar floor plan, the applicant is providing 12 parking spaces and 25 bicycle parking spaces, and would also locate mechanical equipment on this level. This floor plan shows a typical apartment layout for the second through fourth floors. And this floor plan shows a typical layout of the fifth and sixth floors. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment in which the R5 district with the C12 overlay would change to an R6A district with a C13 overlay within the first 100 feet of the block end on 31st Avenue. Beyond 100 feet, an R5 district would be mapped, which would more closely align with the established residential character of the midblock. R5 districts allow for one- and two-family homes with a maximum FAR of 1.25 and a maximum building height of 40 feet. Rear, front, and side yards are required, and parking must be provided for 85% of dwelling units. The C12 commercial overlay permits retail and commercial uses up to a 1-FAR in R5 districts and those of lower density. The R6A district would allow for a multifamily building with a maximum FAR of 3.6 and maximum building height of 85 feet. The base heights in R6A districts must be between 40 and 65 feet. Parking must be provided for 50% of dwelling units or 25% for income-restrictive units. C12, I'm sorry, C13 commercial overlays permit retail and commercial uses up to a 2-FAR in R6 districts and those of a higher density. The applicant also requests a zoning text amendment to map both MIH options 1 and 2. Option 1 would require 25% of residential floor area to be for affordable housing units for residents with incomes averaging 60% of the area media income, and with a minimum of 10% of housing to be affordable at 40% AMI. Option 2 would require that 30% of residential floor area must be for affordable housing units for residents with incomes averaging 80% of the AMI. In summary, 4211 Development LLC requests a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of an approximately 38,000 square-foot residential building with ground-floor retail. These actions would allow for a moderate increase in density on a wide intersection of three streets, and would facilitate the development of 33 dwelling units, 10 to 12 of which would be affordable. Residents would have access to several subway lines as well as commercial corridors. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Teal. Just a couple of quick ones from me. So just confirming, that existing curb cut that lives there on 43rd Street, that will be the curb cut that would be used for access to the cellar, is that correct?
Yes, this is correct.
Okay. And the parking spaces, the 12 parking spaces, where does that fall in terms of the minimum requirements or the existing standards that we have for parking?
Sure. Yeah, the applicant is providing the minimum required amount of parking and no more.
Great. Thank you. Let me see what other questions there are. Commissioner Bozorg?
Do we know if that pre-war building that's across the street, is that rent stabilized?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's something we might be able to find out.
Okay. I think we should be able to find out. That'd be interesting to know.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you very much, Teal. This item is certified, and we appreciate your presentation very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of an acquisition and disposition and referral of a City Planning Commission certification in Manhattan, Community District 11. And our presenter is going to be Jose Trucios, but he might have gone upstairs. We'll ping him, and we'll go on to the third item. The third item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had to put it in my.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we can go to the second item then. So Jose's going to present on the second item.
Hello, Jose. Good afternoon.
Hi, everyone. How's it going? Let me get a clicker. This is Chair NYC, operating in East Harlem, Community District 11. HPD, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, is proposing an acquisition of a vacant portion of the, of the vacant portion of a lot in 1655 Lot 29 in East Harlem, Community District 11, and subsequently, the disposition of such lot for, the disposition, and also there's a certification for the CPC and the MTA for a transit agreement to see if it's required or not. This will facilitate the development of a 10-story chair housing, supported housing under the Chair NYC pilot program, facilitating the development of 32 rooming units with community facilities for on-site supportive social services. The development site is located in Community District 11 in East Harlem, is bounded by 10th Avenue to the west, east of 106 to the north, 105 to the south, and 2nd Avenue to the east, in an R9A. So the portion that you see graded in yellow with the red dotted line is what will be disposed, acquired, and then disposed. So it's not entirely of the Lot 29, it's only a portion of that, which is entirely within the East Harlem Corridor in an R9 district, and also within the special transit land use district. The other portion, the rented portion, is an R7, no, R7, sorry. Our little background on timeline, the Lot 29 was disposed on 1995 through HPD to Ascending Neighborhood Development. At that time, there were, with that disposition, there were some more requirements and restrictions to the lot, to what could be potentially develop in it, so it limited the new development for housing of four units or less, and only limited to rehabilitation and improvements to existing buildings. It wasn't until 2014 that the neighborhood construction program and the new infill improvement program, I want to say, opportunities program that were developed by HPD that allow more development in smaller vacant lots like this. So there were an opportunity to develop this portion of the lot at that time, in 1995, until now. 2017, city leaders realized that there were opportunities to, you know, be explored in terms of the needs of more small households in the, to meet the commitments of housing in New York, about 300,000 housing units by 2026. And in 2018, HPD, you know, released the Chair NYC pilot program to explore existing and potential chair housing opportunities. In 2019, HPD announced the designation of Ascending Neighborhood Development, which is an East Harlem affordable housing developer with many years in the community, and the Alephorni Center, which is a nationwide, I don't want to say it wrong, but they advocate for a lot of the work that LGBTQ do in the nation, and a lot of their services are, you know, to help that particular population, and they will be partnering in this development. As I mentioned, the Chair NYC program, essentially what is encouraged is the smaller type of housing, the community type of home-like environment, and of the three different development sites that were awarded, Chair NYC was one of those, you know, allowing them to create more affordable version of dorm style, living arrangements for this particular development site. Here's a picture of the running area, which is, you know, in a majority residential scale between, you know, four to 10 stories. 2nd Avenue, 10th Avenue being in the main corridors, which encompasses a little more of the ground-floor retail. Here's a view of system conditions within the East 106 Street, the site, you know, adjacent to the existing building of five stories, and I can't see anything, ground-floor retail also. Views of that, also 106, looking northwest at the, I believe, 20 stories Franklin Plaza, and the rear yard, which is existing right now but doesn't have access, or the existing building that is on the site doesn't have access to the yard, so has been under utilization for some time, and this is a view of the current development site with a little mural trying to lighten the actual, you know, site. Kind of a quick summary of the proposed development. Again, it's a 10-story chair-supported housing residential building with, you know, a total of about 20,000, 21,000 square feet of total area of this. 19,000 will be kind of residential, you know, under the nonprofit institution with sleeping accommodations, and about 3,000 for supportive social services, you know, which is, includes some multipurpose, multipurpose ground-floor rooms, office spaces, four-share housing units, and one superintendent unit, which will generate total 32 rooming units, distributed between the 10th and the 10th floor. All right. So just a quick kind of like look, and I have a little more floor plans later on about on the chair housing unit style. There are five chair housing units and one superintendent unit, and these are distributed in, you know, about, it's two per floor, right, having like four units, four rooming units per floor, so in total 32. Floor plans of the cellar ground level and second level. And here you can see, we have about like four unit, oh, four rooming units of bedrooms per floor of a typical unit plan. Just going to back up a little bit to see the actual, in the ground level where the amenities for the, for the building will be located, the multipurpose in the back, the outdoor space, there's a lobby, and also a, what is called a working, I want to say working, study, or, where is it? The site is also located within the flood zone, so the ground floor level will be raised by three feet of the design flood elevation. This site was also analyzed within the environmental impact statement of the Harlem 2017, and in 20, in March of 2022, HPD issued a technical memorandum ensuring that there were in that there were additional adverse impacts identified as part of this project. In summary, HPD is acquiring the side, the vacant portion of the site, disposing and conveying it to Ascendant in order to allow further development of housing, given the restrictions in nineteen ninety-five when allowed it to, you know, create more affordable housing of that. It's also, you know, important to say that the East Harlem Resonance in two thousand seventeen gave more potential development for this site, so the site will be developed under the Quality Housing and the Monetary Inclusionary Housing Regulations. The site could potentially go up to eight point five FAR or a high of a hundred and seventy-five, but given that it's limited by the, the, the high of, I had it in my notes, but I can access this right now, I can remember what it's called, but it's a restriction on the section that allows how high you can go with a smaller size. So this only has a twenty-seven feet of frontage, so it's restricted by how high it can go. So it's only limited to a hundred feet maximum.
The sliver lot rule?
Sliver.
Yeah, the sliver lot rules, so the...
Yeah, I was gonna say the section.
When the, when the lot is particularly narrow, less than forty feet, then limited in height.
Right, so it's limited to a hundred feet in this case, which gives you a C point five FAR, which is still a lot more, you know, given the East Harlem particular Mih requirements. There will be also the open space or rehabilitation rear yard that will be only accessible to the residents of the new building. Unfortunately, like I said, the existing building on the site doesn't have access to the backyard, so there is no way to ensure that they have access to the new improved site. But there is a Neesman Agreement between the existing and the new proposed building to allow the new residents to use that space. In two thousand thirteen, oh, in two thousand thirteen, the NTA issued a transit Eastman that are required for the, for the Eastman volume in here. We reached out to them back in twenty, in December twenty twenty-two. They, you know, reconfirmed that they won't be requiring a Neesman on this site as well. And the site will be developed in, under enterprise green community standard building. This is something that is very, you know, present and most of the developments in Ascendant Neighborhood Development happening. East Harlem, they have a very strong relationship with the community board and, you know, this being certified today doesn't mean that the community board has already been looped on this for probably two, three times, and they have worked with them into what this has become since I first saw it three years ago. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Jose. Let me go to questions from commissioners, but before I do, a couple of quick points of clarification for me. The history of this site is pretty complicated. Based on your presentation, it's clear that HPD back in nineteen ninety-five disposed of this property to Ascendant Neighborhood Development, which as I understand it, then did a rehabilitation of the building, the building that existed and still exists there on the site, but did not do anything for the adjoining site next door. Correct so far?
Yeah.
Okay. And the action here that we're looking at is an acquisition and a disposition, acquisition from the same party, which is Ascendant Neighborhood Development, and a disposition to Ascendant plus Alley Forney.
It will be back to Ascendant only, Alley's part of the program.
Management, the program of the building. Okay. So just, just take another minute, if you don't mind, explaining to us why we are reacquiring and redeposing of the side lot which was never developed. I may have stolen Commissioner Gold's question. I can see from his face, but we're gonna, but if he still has one, he's gonna be the first in line. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, no, sorry, fine. And actually, I would say we'll have to reach out to the applicant early on and, you know, I'm trying to look specifically for that email, but to my understanding, and HPD is also aware of this issue and they will be able to answer these questions in, you know, a more straightforward manner, but to my understanding, it was that the nineteen ninety-five, you know, accelerated UDA to City Council had specific restrictions in terms of what they could do with the development, the, the actual lot. And that kind of like, they restricted how much in, you know, housing units they could produce. I want to say that the, you know, the nineteen ninety-five was only for improvement and, you know, and rehab of the existing side of the four units in there. I don't think they developed the four, you know, that, that stories, I think it was just only rehab, limited to rehab on that side. And, you know, this new acquisition will release those restrictions and particularly allowing them to do more of this, you know, develop more housing units in general than it would normally do throughout, I mean, you know, other programs HPD.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gold is gonna defer for a moment to Commissioner Benjamin, who I believe may have some specific personal knowledge on this.
Right, I in fact did this item. This was an accelerated UDA, and the accelerated UDA program is only available for land uses that are one to four units or rehab. And when that occurs, it does not come through the planning commission, the community board or the borough president. The only actor is the council and the land use powers of the council. At that time, this building was presented as a rehab and there were, as I recall, there was going to be open space on the rest of the lot, so.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioner.
No, I'm good. That was, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Jose, I'm looking at the layouts of these proposed units. So is the targeted occupancy here families or individuals or who are we targeting? Formerly homeless, I know, but among that demographic.
Yeah, so I believe it's gonna be specifically to, targeted to young adults, LGBTQ plus residents in the area, given the program that is, you know, supporting the development here.
You said young adults?
Mm-hmm.
So are these, would these be individuals who are aging out of the foster care?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
How close to mass transit is this?
The closest station is in East One Ten Street. So it's, we're in walking distance. You have that one, you have the Ninth Street, I believe, as well. So it's not too far and it's also part of the expanded Second Avenue, you know, plans for the NTA.
Mr. Marine?
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'll say, I'll say, good afternoon. Thank you for the presentation. It's, it's nice to see this to come to fruition. I know that we have been presented, this body have been presented with some studies. I believe they were specifically in Spain where they have more family type oriented units, but a central core where had kitchen, ironing space, community space, TV room. So that concept is interesting here. And I do understand that now based on the question answered to Commissioner Knuckles really regarding the demographics that they're young adults and seeing the layouts, these look, you know, more like roommate type situations. So who's, my concern would be, you know, how are they being vetted? Once placed, who's supervising? What type of programs are in the building to support them? And then, of course, have there been any studies in the community to support this type of development positively? Either community board or, or not-for-profits are involved with this endeavor?
Yeah. That's a great question. I don't want to, you know, speak on behalf of the actual developer and their programming. I know that, you know, their on-site community service will include some type of like, you know, workforce development programs or so. I know that they're, you know, oriented towards that young adults and homeless services providing within the area, but I think they will be more equipped to answer those particular questions. It does include, I mean, if we can go back to, you know, perhaps one of the floor plans in here. So it does include, you know, there are five shared kitchen units, there is the eighteen total ADA accessible bathrooms in two per, per floor. But yeah, that, those were one of the concerns that we had early on in terms of like Harlem or East Harlem in general, my community board being part of, you know, wanting to have more family oriented type of housing, you know, like two, three plus bedroom. But we also recognize in, as I was gonna say, we talking about like members of community board being in that, you know, in those meetings, it's part of like, this type of housing is also needed, right? So it's, it's in a, a lot smaller site that would not generate the amount of housing particularly that will be perhaps appealing for, you know, families. And, and so like potentially you could generate under the, you know, neighborhood construction program or the HPD program that is not targeted for shared housing, you will generate a little less than the amount of rooming units that they will generate under this program. So the applicant has considered those in terms of, you know, what will generate the more number of units and they feel like Shared NYC is the appropriate one.
We'll prep the sponsor though to come in with some details, because I think it's a really...
This is really very interesting. I really mean that sincerely. And so getting, gaining more information would be great. And then my last question would be, I will assume that the units are coming furnished.
Yes, they're going furnished and I believe also all utilities are paid.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowell?
Yeah, I am familiar with Alley Forney Center and I'm just on their website just to confirm some of my understanding of the scope of their programs. When they do come in, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the precise population that's going to be in different parts of the building, because there are a lot of youth in their, in their shelter program. I'm not sure that this is, this is a shelter per se, it looks like it might be, it's a different, different kind of structure, but it'd be very helpful to understand the population, their precise ages, scope of programming and...
Yeah. I think, yeah, that's definitely fair and I will communicate that to the applicant.
Okay.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I just had a question about the actual disposition. Is the, is HPD acquiring part of the lot that's going to be built on or are they reacquiring the entire lot?
Only the vacant portion of the lot. So like the, the, the one that wasn't developed, yeah.
Are they gonna split the lots then? How is that gonna?
We, we are proceeding under the assumption that it's only, we're calling the development site and the project area being the, the larger site, so the entire Lot Twenty Nine, but they're not splitting the lot because it's under the same ownership currently, Lot Twenty Nine. But if there were two different owners, they would have to get an authorization and split the lot or some type of other mechanism, but since it's the same owner, they are only disposing of what is vacant and conveying it back to the same owner.
To build another building. Right, but I guess my concern would be if they're only disposing of part of the lot and it's remaining one lot, if there is a problem of any type, both lot, both portions will be responsible for anything that occurs on either part of the lot.
That it's the same owner, right?
Yeah, it's the same owner.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm sure that for insurance purposes and other things, there might be a need to separate.
For construction and things like that.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's a, we can...
And that has come, yeah.
We can ask HPD how they deal with this.
And that question, you know, that has come up and that was part of the whole, you know, access from the existing building through the new building back, back to the open space. And that's why they, they don't have that access. Kind of like to mitigate the, you know, in and out ingress of, you know, residents from the other, the other building, the existing building to the new building, but more clarification to come with HPD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buzzard?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say how excited I am to see this come forward. One of the, the main spirits of the shared housing RFEI was an acknowledgement that we need different types of housing typologies to meet the different types of demand that this affordability crisis has presented. So just really want to commend DCPA and HPD for figuring out the complexity of this and Ascendant and Alley Forney for, for kind of being the leader in this space and, and taking us to this next era. It's just really exciting to see it come forward and I'm excited to see other projects that kind of proposed, proposed cohousing come through as well, hopefully.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Jose. This item is certified. We will move on to item number three on our agenda today.
Certainly. So this item number three is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Connor Clark.
Hello, Connor.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Five Point Two Six Two Project LLC, which seeks a parking special permit pursuant to Section thirteen four five one of the zoning resolution to build a residential accessory automated parking garage with a total capacity of twenty-three spaces as part of residential development in Manhattan Community District Five on West Twenty Ninth Street between Fifth Avenue and Broadway. Under the Manhattan Core Regulations, accessory residential parking is capped at twenty percent of residential units in Community Districts one through six and thirty-five percent in Community Districts seven and eight. The development site outlined here in red is located on the northeast corner of Fifth Avenue and West Twenty Ninth Street. The garage would be located on the ground floor, cellar and subcellar levels of a twenty-six unit, fifty-six story residential building that is currently under construction. Under the Manhattan Core Regulations, the building would be allowed five spaces as of right. The development site outlined here in neon green is located in the Nomad neighborhood of East Chelsea. Madison Square Park is located three blocks to the south and the Koreatown, and Koreatown and the Empire State Building are located a short distance to the north. Marble Collegiate Church is located across the West Twenty Ninth Street to the north. Protected bike lane runs along the south side of West Twenty Ninth Street past the entrance to the garage. The area is well-served by public transit with the Twenty Eighth Street Station for the R and W trains on West Twenty Ninth Street and Broadway and the Twenty Eighth Street Station for the sixth train located on East Twenty Eighth Street and Park Avenue South. The M one, M two, M three and M fifty-five buses run south on Fifth Avenue and the M seven and M fifty-five bus, buses run north on Sixth Avenue. The M twenty-three bus, select bus service runs east-west on Twenty Third Street. The development site falls mostly within a C five-two zoning district with a small sliver on the west side of the zoning lot located in the adjacent M one-six district. A C five-two, C five-two zoning districts are essential commercial districts with buildings that typically contain ground floor retail uses and office or residential uses on the upper floors. M one-six districts are light manufacturing districts, often located adjacent to residential commercial districts and permit industrial uses that meet high performance standards as well as most commercial uses. The area is characterized by a mix of uses and building forms, including low-density commercial structures, high-rise hotels, high-rise residential former store and loft buildings converted to residences and modern office structures. These photos taken during the winter show recent progress on the building. The photo on the right shows Marble Collegiate Church located across West Twenty Ninth Street from the development site. This drawing shows the ground floor, the ground level, the ground level plan of the, of the proposed garage at West Twenty Ninth Street with the garage entrance outlined in red and the building lobby located to the east below the garage entrance on the drawing. Cars would drive west on West Twenty Ninth Street and turn left over the twelve-foot wide curb cut into the garage driveway. Two flashing LED warning lights located on either, on the exterior wall of either side of the garage door, together with an audible warning, would alert pedestrians to the imminent entry or exit of a vehicle. Cars would then proceed to the automated garage door outlined in red on this drawing. The driveway located to the right of the door would be an unenclosed split space. The entry bay to the left of the door would be fully enclosed. In the event that the automated system were processing another vehicle, the garage door would remain closed until the system is ready to handle the incoming vehicle. If the system were retrieving a parked vehicle for a driver seeking to leave, the process would be suspended in order to prioritize the incoming vehicle. Once the system is free, the driver would open the garage door using a remote control. The vehicle would enter the entry bay and the driver would position it on the vehicle elevator. The driver and passengers would unload the vehicle and exit the entry bay through the door at the bottom of the drawing. Once the driver initiates the automated parking system using a touchscreen in the building lobby, the system would then scan the entry bay to ensure no one is still there and close the entry bay door and the vehicle elevator would lower the vehicle to be parked on the levels below. Fifteen parking spaces would be located in the cellar, four in subcellar one and four in subcellar two. The vehicle elevator would lower cars to each of these levels and automated guided vehicles or AGVs would move the cars around on pallets to place them in available spots. AGVs are free-roaming, battery-operated, omnidirectional units that travel on enclosed flat surfaces and communicate via a master traffic control system used to manage the automated garage and automated storage and retrieval of parked vehicles. To retrieve a vehicle, the driver would use the touchscreen in the lobby to initiate the parking system, which would transport the vehicle up to the entry which would transport the vehicle up to the entry bay. The driver and, and passengers would, uh, board and use a remote control device to open the door and drive out the entry bay. Uh, after stopping at the stop sign, um, after stopping at the stop sign and proceeding over the speed bump, uh, they would turn left onto West Twenty-Ninth Street and proceed west. On the subcellar one level, there would be an additional loading and unloading room that would be accessed by residents who need additional time to load or unload. Residents would not be allowed to board in, in, in the vehicle in this area. It would be strictly for loading and unloading luggage. Residents would request their vehicles from the touchscreen or by mobile app and the AGVs would, uh, retrieve them and place them in this spot. The automated barriers of the three sides of the, um, on three sides of the vehicle would, uh, be raised and allow for loading and unloading. Once complete, the barriers would be lowered, the vehicles would be scanned to ensure no one is inside and the vehicle would be transported either to a parking space or to ground level for passengers to board. The findings for Section thirteen four five one indicate that the CPC may approve a parking facility that exceeds the twenty percent maximum limit for Community District Five if the number of off-street parking spaces in such proposed parking facility is reasonable and not excessive in relation to recent trends in close proximity to the proposed facility with regard to dwelling units and parking spaces. The special permit also, uh, also has findings in Section thirteen four five related to congestion, the efficient functioning of streets, conflicts between different modes of transportation and the character of the streetscape. For the finding related to residential growth, uh, in order to show that the increase in parking is reasonable and not excessive, the applicant completed a residential growth parking study for both developments. The study compared all changes in residential off-street parking depicted in the map on the, on the left to all changes in residential dwelling units depicted on the map on the right within a ten-year lookback period from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-four, extended two years, uh, to the anticipated completion of, uh, year of the project. Sites were considered if they were located within a radius of a third of a mile of the development site. The study found that during the lookback period, there was a net decrease of sixty-seven parking spaces, including the project, and an increase of two thousand seven hundred sixty-two dwelling units. This gives the proposed, uh, project a residential growth parking ratio of negative two point four percent. In Community District Five, the maximum permitted growth of off-street parking spaces to dwelling units in a ten-year lookback period is twenty percent. The applicant seeks a part, uh, special permit pursuant to Section thirteen four five one to allow for twenty-three parking spaces in a garage accessory to a building with twenty-six units. This would be an increase of eighteen spaces over the five as-of-right spaces allowed in this area of the Manhattan Core. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So putting aside for a moment the, uh, fifty-six story building with twenty-six units in it, uh, which is really not perhaps the point of this specific conversation, although that is a shocking, shocking, uh, yeah, well, okay, so maybe it is. So, okay, let's talk about the, the findings necessary here, just so that we can consider, um, this, uh, to the best that we can. Um, the findings in the special permit thirteen dash four five includes a, a variety of elements, including that the location will not unduly interrupt the flow.
Maybe we can get it back on the screen.
Let's do it.
Cause I have them in the appendix.
Yeah, let's get the presentation back up.
Sorry.
That's okay. And while you do that, just let's recap that there are five as-of-right spaces and the request is for twenty-three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's all automated? Um, and there will be a curb cut regardless because of the five?
Correct.
Okay, um, now in terms of the finding, number two, um, there, um, is a requirement that the location will not interfere with the efficient functioning of streets, including any lanes designated for specific types of users or vehicles due to entering or leaving movement of vehicles. Just tell us a little bit more about, um, what that might include and whether there's anything for us specifically to consider here.
Sure, uh, so there, the city designates road space for all types of vehicles, different users. Um, there are bus lanes, bike lanes, um, repurposing of the curb now. Um, and the reason why this could be an issue is that there is a protected bike lane mapped on Twenty-Ninth Street running, uh, east-west. It's next to the curb and it runs right past the entrance to the garage. Um, so that would be, um, uh, a particular type of user that, you know, there could be a conflict there.
Okay, all right, okay, uh, let me go to questions. Commissioner Duex?
Has the automated system been put in use in another building? Has it been tested?
Yeah, there, there are some locations around the city where, um, these have been installed.
The same, the same system? Do we know for the same?
The same exact system with, like, the same company that?
Same company, same operation?
Uh, I, I need to get back to you on that.
And as far as the, the bike lane interference, I mean, I would say that you already have the, uh, curb cut there and the ability for other vehicles to exit. I don't know how much that changes the dynamic.
Yeah, as of right, they're, they, they, they can do five spaces, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
So, sorry, just, um, one quick question. So these are all for use by the, the residential folks inside the building?
Correct, it's accessory.
Got it, perfect, thanks. Commissioner Rampershad, Commissioner Osorio?
Just a question, has, was there any thought about putting two elevators in? It's rare that you see one. I'm just curious, there's twenty-three cars, careful if something should happen, brakes. I'm just stuck. I'm just curious if it was any thought, what was the thought process?
Uh, I, I can't speak to the thought process of, of the applicant and, uh, architects, but, um, I can say that, um, the space is, is fairly limited. Go back to the drawings, um, like you see that outlined in red and, you know, there's just not, not a great deal of space to put in another elevator. Um, but I can, I can talk to the applicant.
Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Connor, for the presentation. I have three quick questions. One is, building on Commissioner Duex, uh, it would be great to know if, uh, if this has been used in other places. Uh, what do we know about sort of the, uh, energy requirements, energy efficiency of this? And to what extent this actually, how does this relate to the city's, uh, decarbonization initiatives? I'm interested in hearing what are the requirements associated with these systems? The second is, um, I'm, I'm wondering if you know, how much is a parking spot in this area of Manhattan? How much does that cost? Um, do you know?
Uh, sorry, um, so on the energy requirements, I don't, I don't know exactly, but I do know that, um, that the department generally, um, uh, likes automated parking facilities because they do reduce idling and they have less, uh, energy requirements than, than non-automated facilities. Um, so that's why we have, uh, a, a Florida certification for, for automated parking facilities in Manhattan Core. Um, uh, as far as, but I can, I can look further into the, the exact energy requirements, um.
Particularly also if, if, um, these have been used or should be used in connection with any type of renewable energy sources on site or anything that we can.
Sorry, any type of what?
Renewable energy sources, just to help us think about the, these systems in place.
Sure, yeah, and, um, on your second question as to how much a parking spot in this area costs, I can't speak to that. I can say that we have the example of the previous application that came before the commission where, um, it's going for about half a million dollars in, in a particular, a particular accessory automated parking facility. Um, but I don't know how much that speaks to the, to the general area.
And lastly, do we know what the plan is for these parking spots? Are they gonna be for the residents or what do we know about that?
Yeah, as far as I know, they're gonna be for the residents, but I can get back to the applicant and just see like what the, um, what the plan is for distributing those, because I know that sometimes they go to non-residents. But at the same time, uh, just from experience looking at these, the, the process of accessing this for a non-resident is, can be complicated, especially because there's entrance through the lobby, there's a touchscreen. You have to have your car registered with the system and all that, so, but I'll get back to the applicant on that.
Thank you, Connor, and sorry, one last question if you don't mind. This is more, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to confirm that. Is, is there any, any initiative or any plan to update the, uh, parking study for the Manhattan Core at this point? Anything that can help us sort of like analyze this proposal in the light of everything that we've discussed?
Well, we're, we're looking into, um, parking, parking requirements broadly as a, as a part of the housing plan, Housing Text Amendment. Um, so we'll definitely be visiting, um, you know, the parking requirements, uh, in the five boroughs. Um, as far as, uh, the Manhattan Core, um, we've looked at a few options. We haven't, um, you know, gotten any specific results or recommendations, but, um, we can keep, continue looking into it.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duex?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Osorio touched on my, uh, one of my questions was gonna be, um, do we know if, if the space, the parking space is equipped, uh, is wired for electric vehicles? Um, that was one, uh, question. And a comment, there, there's been a tremendous amount of residential growth and conversions in that area and not, um, an abundance of parking. I used to work there for about fifteen years and it were a couple of blocks away. So I know the area pretty well and many of the buildings that were former office buildings are, been torn down and built into, uh, residential property. So there, there is a need for, for residential parking in, in that area for people. And most of the time, I'd imagine that the cars come out on the weekends and not during the week, so it's not such an impediment to, uh, daily traffic.
Yeah, that, that usually is the vision for, for these types of facilities. Um, as far as EV charging, um, all spaces will be EV-ready. Um, eleven will be equipped with charging stations. Um, uh, but that's, that's also in flux. They might install more charging stations.
And so, uh, because of the automated, uh, system, how, how does one go and plug in their car or is it?
That was exactly my question. Um, so they, when you, when a driver drives into the entry bay, uh, there's a pallet there and they plug their vehicle into the pallet and then the pallet takes it down the elevator, AGV takes the pallet around and then if the, the driver will, um, specify on the touchscreen, um, whether they want it to be charged and if they do, the pallet will take it to a charging station.
That'll bring you back to my original question, which is to see if this technology's been tested in another, this exact technology has been tested in other locations, so we can get an idea of how it works and if any malfunctions or, thank you, I'll look into that.
And also there is some sort of a mechanism to make sure that the person has left the pallet before it disappears into, uh, the basement of the building, correct?
Yeah, that, the, the, the entry bay is scanned, um, for any movement, uh, probably twice. Um, there's, there's a lot of safety protocols for these.
Go ahead.
Do they scan in the cars and give for children, just, I mean, just in case somebody's left in the baby seat or something like?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Do they assist to do that?
Yeah.
Children, animals, right, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Rampershad, Commissioner Benjamin?
Sorry, just a clarification, even with these automated systems, are they allowed to reduce the size of the parking space? Because in the zone, isn't it eight foot six by eighteen, but you can also reduce it certain side yard conditions? But in this automated, according to the stuff we have in our, our packet here, they have seven foot eight by seventeen seven. Is that something that the department is, I guess, due to the, the size of the space, they're allowing it to be reduced?
Uh, well, the, I can look further into the dimensions. I don't have the information offhand, but there are, um, smaller dimensions for automated facilities versus attend, versus, um, unattended facilities.
Okay.
Um, just because if a computer's doing it, then, then it's, you know, limits the, the amount of movement that's necessary.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I was wondering, um, the fire department has had issues in the past with these automated garages. Have those issues been totally fleshed out and handled? Or is it a case by case? I'm just, given their location in the basement of a building, I think it's important, and the fires that we've had with other kinds of vehicles, that, um, the fire department really be aware and signing off on these. I mean, I know they have to sign off after us, but I'd like to know the fire department's opinion on how these work and the safety measures that are being incorporated.
Yeah, that, that's a fair question. Um, the previous one that you saw, um, was, um, on Twenty-Eighth Street and, uh, that application was actually held up because, um, the fire department had some issues with the layout and they had to sort of reconfigure it and they ended up with less spaces because of it, although that application was, was turned down by the council. Um, so, so there is, you know, the fire department has been involved in consultations with these. Um, but, uh, yeah, again, I can, I can look in, into that further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bezos?
Um, I have a question that kind of relates to something, um, Commissioner Duex and Commissioner Osorio's raised, but, um, it's, none of this analysis takes into account the existing parking garages in the area, is that right? It's just residential growth in parking spaces as, as it relates to residential developments?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's the change. It's the amount of change that's happened.
But a, as associated with residential developments, not necessarily.
Yeah, there's a formula for the.
Existing parking garages or parking.
Yeah, there's a formula for determining, uh, the amount of parking in a particular garage that's, that qualifies as residential.
Oh, okay, so it does take into consideration garage spaces that are for residential use in the area?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner, are you making the distinction between a freestanding garage and one that is associated with the residential building?
Yes, yeah.
So when you have a freestanding garage, that is an existing freestanding garage and somebody does the analysis as they did here to determine what happened within a third of a mile? Just to be clear.
Are the freestanding garages part of this analogy?
Are the freestanding garages included in the tally, I think?
The, the number, there's an, an amount of, a percentage of spaces, I don't have it offhand, but there's a percentage of spaces that are considered residential.
In those freestanding garages, yeah.
Yeah, in a particular, um.
That they would allow for like monthly rates or residential rates, yeah.
It's along those lines, but, but it's, it's based on community district. I can get back to you with the specifics.
Yeah, I mean, the, the general spirit, trying to better understand what actually is the available parking outside of this ratio or kind of what, and what, a little more nuanced of what goes into this ratio to understand, are there alternatives that just, that are in the area that aren't being captured here? Um, yeah.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Okay, one quick question. Um, I'm assuming these numbers are based on the Consumer Affairs allowable number of parking spaces and not the actual number of cars that may be in the facility at any time?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're gonna be based on that data, yeah, they're based on, yeah.
And do you have an idea in this area? I mean, most commercial garages and accessory garages have more cars inside than their Consumer Affairs permit would allow? Do we have any idea of what that relationship might be, just?
That's, that's a very good question. Um, it would definitely involve a good amount of field work to go out to specific garages to find out. I mean, it's a good bet that, um, the operators are, are storing vehicles, you know, in the access zone and on ramps and stuff, but, um, but we really don't have any way of knowing until we, you know, go out to specific garages and look.
Okay.
So we can, we can get a sense, but I, we're, we're not gonna get, you know, much of an exact number unless we kind of devote a lot of resources to it, so.
Although since you are doing, you've talked about the parking work that the department is doing, I would appreciate it if the, if in that work, they looked at that question of the permit amounts versus the actual parking that's taking place.
Right, yeah, it's a good question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duex?
Thank you, um, one more question, just, uh, based off Commissioner Benjamin's question. Are we assuming that this parking garage will have to be licensed by Consumer Affairs? Being that it's not open to the public and it's, uh, only open to the residents through an automated system?
No, I, I, I think her, her question is just based on like what data we're using. Um, because, uh, for the parking study that the applicant is using, uh, DCA data, or excuse me, um, DCWP data. Uh, but this, this facility, um, assuming it stays just a residential accessory facility, um, would probably not have a DCWP license. Um, it, it's only when garages go public that they need to get a license. Um, and, and that's really, that's really ends up being up to the, up to the operator, um, as to whether they make that decision.
Who, which agency would be in charge of inspecting the, um, it'd be DOB? Just to, I'm sorry, just to, you know, uh, the, uh, the inspections, uh, annual inspections or whatever it might be to make sure the facility is working, would it be DOB? Would it be fire? Who would be?
Oh, yeah, it would be DOB, I believe, yeah.
Got it, okay. And fire?
The CFO will have the, the maximum amount of vehicles that could be parked in the garage. The buildings would have the enforcement.
Buildings would have enforcement or, and would, would it be subject to an?
Buildings would have enforcement or, and would, would it be subject to an annual inspection? If it's an inspection or whatever?
I believe we have a regime for inspecting parking garages at the DOB.
Commissioner Cerrulo. Commissioner Cerrulo.
I just wanted, just to kind of weigh in on thoughts here. The, the, it's, it will be nearly impossible to find out that, what's really happening because no one will admit to you that they can only park a hundred cars there, but they park a hundred and fifty cars there every day. Like it, it, it's, it's part of this is about revealing the truths versus what the approvals or authorizations actually are. So it'll be a very difficult data point to get because what we're really trying to figure out is how people are really operating, which is never going to be something they admit if they are not operating exactly how the approvals were granted. So that's going to be, that will be a very difficult number to, to be able, unless you go in there and you, one day you count, but it'll be one day. You, you don't know that that happens every day. Um, but we do know that that's why you have reservoir spaces. That's why you have, people are coming and going all the time. And they do tend to fill up a little bit more than they should. Um, but I just wanted to say it'll be really difficult to get that number and be able to trust it in any operation. But it's what you're really asking them is to just please tell us how you're violating your authorization to do business. And that's going, that would be difficult to probably get information from.
I'd love to have that data, but, but I agree with you.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Although I would say that, um, I think any of the, the transportation engineering firms could stand outside with those little counters we used to have and do the ins and outs on an hourly basis. And I think it could be done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a study, it could be done.
Right, I think if you send a letter out to the commercial garages and others and say, "How many extra cars do you have here?" They're going to tell you none.
None, we're, we're hurting, yeah.
Okay, um, okay. Commissioner Gold.
No, I guess, I just wanted to add to that though. It can be done, I think it'd be expensive to do. And also from having looked closely a number of years ago at the parking business, what you find is that during the day, during the, the commercial lots are the ones that might overflow versus the residential, right? Because where they actually make their money is on the turnover. It's not, it's not on the, the one who's parking it for the month. It's the one who's coming in for an hour where they charge a lot of money and then they keep going. So there, they try to stuff the garages. So there, there is a question, it is a good question about whether as Midtown is kind of, is starting to change and you're seeing less, let's say, commercial use, right? And less folks in the city five days, is there less of that happening? And, and there might be, um, but it's, it's interesting.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, uh, thank you very much, Connor. This item is certified and we will look forward to seeing it again down the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ryan, let's go to the next.
The fourth item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a zoning authorization in Manhattan Community District eleven. And our presenter is Jose Trusios.
All right, this is one eighty each, one twenty fifth three. I was here on February, presenting a little bit of this, kind of like the larger side and, you know, plans for this area in Upper Manhattan. Um, you guys recall the MTA isment certification. Uh, but now today we're here to talk about fresh authorization for the actual proposed development on the zoning lot. This is an application about one twenty fifth is three L, the leasing LC, the, um, party who will be, you know, leasing the actual proposed development site. Uh, as for the zoning authorization pursuant to Zoning Resolution sixty-three twenty-two to modify the maximum building height. And the action will facilitate a development of a fifteen-story mixed-use building containing residential, commercial uses and generating about five hundred units of housing, of them up to a hundred and sixty will be affordable. The ground floor will be occupied by about twenty-four thousand of commercial, twenty-four thousand square feet of commercial. And that will include the fresh restore at a six thousand one hundred ninety-four square feet. The site is located in C four port D district and are equivalent within the special one twenty fifth district and as well as the special transit land use district. Uh, it is bounded by Lexington Avenue to the west, Thirteenth Avenue to the east, East One Twenty-Fifth, uh, to the north and East One Twenty-Four to the south. Um, it contains lot, you know, the zoning lot is twenty and twenty-seven, but the proposed development will be only located in Lot twenty-seven. Uh, a little bit of background on timeline. Uh, the Harlem is Harlem renewal plan, um, allow the development to, you know, pursue with the creation of the Pathmark supermarket around in nineteen ninety-eight. This Pathmark supermarket was vacated since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the, you know, uh, the Pathmark and the other building that were part of the actual zoning lot had been raised and is all clear out at the moment. Just quickly on the, uh, fresh program, the food retail extension to Ford Health Program was created in two thousand and nine. There were some updates in two thousand and twenty-one that I will mention in here. As I mentioned, the MTA, you know, the updated MTA was approved on early this month, on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And Manhattan Community Board issued to approve the project in March twenty-second of this year. There is a existing condition of the size I mentioned. There is a, excuse me, the, the lot has been completely, you know, clear out. There is no Pathmark anymore, uh, in the area. You know, the corridor exhibits multiple, you know, new type of development in the area. You got Gotham Plaza, one is Harlem. Uh, there are things up and down in One Twenty-Fifth Street. There's a existing condition in Thirteenth Avenue looking into the development site. A lot of, you know, same, of the more, a little residential with some height rise up to like twenty stories in the area. Um, and the proposed development. So as I mentioned, they're proposing fifteen stories mixed-use building, uh, with a residential, you know, of five hundred plus units and up to thirty percent, up to thirty percent of affordable housing. Uh, the trust me, the trust me agreement is only located in Lot twenty, as you can see in the figure, in the drawing, in the, um, the bottom. And it will include a hundred and two parking spaces. Right? Uh, parking spaces will be accessible through East One Twenty-Fourth Street. And the main residential area is on Thirteenth Avenue. The proposed fresh food store is located in East One Twenty-Fifth Street in the corridor of the proposed development. Um, just quickly to go into what a fresh food store, you know, main definition is, you know, their particular, uh, requirements or conditions that this, uh, the fresh food store needs to meet in order to be qualified as a fresh food store, which we had determined that this application does, you know, where at least six thousand square feet is allocated to the sale of general food. Uh, there is the different requirements between the, you know, what percentage to be allocated for non-perishable, imperishable, uh, food cell and all of the, you know, minimum requirements have been analyzed. And also as well, the signage and transparency requirements. Uh, and here's a quick, um, kind of like look at what the fresh food store area, ground floor plan would look like with, you know, for the sale of food and non-food products. Just the spaces as non-grocery space will be allocated for checkout area. And there is also the non-retail space, which is a, an office space for the, uh, ground floor of the fresh food store. All right, so in order to, um, grant the authorization to modify the maximum building height, uh, so going from fifteen, uh, up to fifteen feet and up to one story was currently allowed on the, what the zoning currently allows. This will allow the applicant to go from one hundred and forty feet to one sixty feet, fourteen stories to fifteen stories. They said that, that there had to be some findings on this, uh, particular authorization. And here, here's the waiver side plan that allows the development to accommodate more than the additional residential area generated to the fresh certification. The fresh certification essentially gives you one square foot of additional residential area per one square foot of, uh, generated fresh food store. And if you recall, I, I mentioned it was about six thousand one hundred ninety-four square feet. So they are getting that amount of, uh, residential area accommodated it. But the waiver side plan includes the entire area of the fifteen floor. So it's a little, uh, it's, since they're giving, they're getting one more additional residential floor that accommodating additional, uh, residential area that is not just for the fresh, but that will also generate thirty-two units of more housing per se. Here is a little, uh, uh, clearer view of the actual waiver on the fif, and the fifteen floor, the top floor. In order to meet that requirement, you also need to have a clear, uh, floor to ceiling clearance of fourteen feet. The applicant is proposing fourteen feet and six inches to accommodate the, the fresh food store on the ground floor. And that is, you know, reallocated into the fifteen story floor. The allowable total floor area without the actual, uh, the increase of the waiver will be three hundred and eighty-nine, two hundred and sixty-five square feet, which will not accommodate the proposed food store area with the clearance of, you know, lower than fourteen, uh, fourteen feet. In order to accommodate what their actual plan of the three hundred nine, three, three thousand eight hundred nine, they're adding the, uh, ground floor of the fresh food store. And that by kind of like pushing the envelope to fourteen feet, six inches, you know, have the, the bigger, uh, plan, uh, sorry, I'm blanking on my words. They will need an additional height in order to accommodate the remaining floor area that is, you know, about twenty thousand more floor allocated in here. Again, resulting in thirty units of housing. It's a little confusing because it's, uh, you know, they are, there is no particularly a one per one as a typical bonus will, will do in a, you know, a zoning transit bonus or, or a pop. It's essentially the story and the actual, you know, waiver to introduce into this building. Uh, you know, the findings on this have very particular, uh, conditions that we need to, um, need to meet. One of those is that it will not insert into the lion area of the surrounding area that is in current, you know, within alignment with a character. Here's just a quick character diagram of One Twenty-Fifth Street. There are others, um, you know, developments in the area, like the one is Harlem that are extending a nineteen stories. The Salvation Army is Harlem at twelve. Gotham Plaza, I believe, fourteen. And the Taino Towers, you know, around thirty-five stories in the area. The department believes, you know, One Twenty-Fifth Street can accommodate additional, uh, you know, density in the area. It's something that we have seen throughout the corridor with other developments and other resondant that we had done recently, uh, the National Black Theater, uh, you know, the Victoria, like, which are kind of within, you know, walking distance of this prop, uh, proposed, uh, project. Manhattan Community Board, um, you know, voted to approve the project with a territory vote in favor, no opposition, abstentions. Uh, there were no concerns in terms of any other findings that the, the, the application was bringing forward to them. But there were some, uh, comments and concerns to, you know, that were a little bit less related to the, the project and the action itself, but they were in line with what the community keeps asking on and, and wants to make sure that's happening in the upcoming projects to, you know, to ensure that a future operator commits to consistent availability of fresh foods at an affordable price, given context of community district. While the department cannot regulate, you know, pricing on this, uh, the, um, project includes a restricted declaration that binds the property to ensure that the fresh food store per, uh, that the ground floor is part of the fresh food store program moving forward. It binds all, you know, future owners of the, of the lot and going forward. And, and on the other two, you know, points, that's more in terms of communication and ensuring that the, the applicant and the, um, community board develop a more of a relationship. They are, you know, this finance and this comment have been passed to the developer and then understand that currently in conversation, had to make that happen and move forward. And in summary, so this is, uh, you know, we bring a lot of like housing in the area. It's part of the site that we have seen for many years. I mean, as I mentioned, but has been baking for, since two thousand and fifteen. It has been a focus of attention for community board, the board president, the department and a lot of other agencies in the area. Uh, we're very happy to finally see moving through and, you know, especially generating a hundred and sixty units of affordable housing. You know, aside from the authorization, which is giving, giving the waiver to go to the fifteen stories instead of fourteen, everything else is being, um, done as of right. So there are no additional waivers, high setbacks or anything related to this. It's, uh, the certification of fresh food store that is, you know, a ministerial action and the authorization, which is a CTC, um, action in here. Uh, and then just, you know, a little like, kind of like shout out to our fresh programs since two thousand and nine and, and in two thousand and twenty-one, which was kind of improved to include the, you know, saturation analysis to ensure that we were in over, you know, populated fresh food stores in neighborhoods like Brooklyn or in other places in, in New York. And also to expand the program to eleven additional community districts. So, you know, within thirty fresh food stores that have been completed, that has allowed a one point two million New Yorkers to live within a half a mile of a fresh market of previously, you know, underserved or, or with fresh limited food availability for residents. You know, um, we have a lot more of this in the pipeline and we look to see more of this, um, happening, especially in Harlem.
Great, thank you very much, Jose. Let me start with Commissioner Duque and Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank, thank you. Um, so let me just digest this. Normally a fresh authorization is a, is by the chair authorization unless there's a height bump. Correct, okay. So over here, we, we have a fresh request for a sixty-one hundred and ninety-four square foot, uh, fresh store, which is probably the minimum that could be designed.
Six thousand is the minimum yet?
Six thousand's the minimum. And, um, normally it can go up to twenty thousand for the bonus. So I, I'm looking at this as more of a, a mechanism by the developer to get the height increased rather than actually create a, uh, viable fresh market. I mean, I'd like to see the proposal go bigger. They can go up to twenty thousand square feet on the fresh proposal. I know that they had about twenty-four thousand square feet of retail. And if the community is really going to benefit, I, I think a bigger market would, might have a, the more, a, a better opportunity to provide better pricing on products, more competitive and be more viable for the long term instead of being, um, kind of like a little corner store. I think it could be much more, um, vibrant supermarket.
That is.
Um, that's pretty much my take on it. And I'd like to know what the developer, you know, feels.
And, and not to speak on behalf of the developer on this, and, and, you know, happy to, to have them come at the next session on the, you know, before the vote. Uh, but we did have, you know, conversations about this. And I think one of, one of the biggest issues is finding an operator to rent the twenty thousand square footage of a fresh food store. You know, it's a, it's a lot larger for this. We, we have a commitment, a letter of, of intent that needs to be recorded before the fresh food store can be certified. So, you know, finding somebody who can commit to a, uh, such a large scale, uh, store is, is a lot more complicated, especially, you know, when you are still finalizing plans and circulation and, and, you know, the, the store is still being developed. So the, the building is still being developed. So it's kind of hard to find somebody that will commit to that. I will say also, you know, in terms of the community board meeting that, that were, that took place twice, on March eighth and March twenty-second, you know, they, they had, there is some sense of having a little more comfort with a smaller scale, uh, food operator than a large scale twenty thousand, you know, Whole Foods or any type of, you know, big supermarket in the area. Uh, but, you know, I can, like, I'll ask the applicant to allow more, uh, elaborate a little more on that response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin, followed by Commissioner Murray.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I thought your presentation was great. But one of my questions has to do with the fact that I was involved with getting Pathmark on One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street. How big was Pathmark?
Well, I have it in my notes right here. Sorry, one second. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know. I could come back to you with a specific.
Okay, well, I think it's fair to say it was bigger than six thousand square feet.
Yes.
Um, and at the time, there was concern about putting the single operator supermarkets that were on Second Avenue out of business. And so we kept it to a certain size so that people could continue. Although the community wanted to see a national chain, normal supermarket in addition to the supermarkets that were there. So as I look at this proposal and I see a six- So as I look at this proposal and I see a six thousand square foot, I mean, right now we have a number of markets entering the New York arena, including Wegmans, which is opening their second store, including Stop &amp; Shop, which is, has taken over some of the locations from Pathmark and is opening more, including Fairway, which is opening smaller stores all over, and it's just smaller than forty thousand square feet, or thirty-seven. It just seems that the six thousand square feet, as the commissioner said, is not an attempt to provide fresh food and choice, um, but rather an attempt to gain extra square footage, and I just don't see how this is going to serve the community. So my next question is where, if you could provide in the future a map of where the supermarkets, larger chain supermarkets are located, um, I would appreciate seeing where else people have the opportunity to shop in the way that people seem to want to shop, um, because this seems to me to be something that would have been built in the seventies in a building, not something in a building of, what, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand square feet?
Four-hundred-and-twelve.
Yeah. Six thousand square feet is like the minimum that they could possibly do. Um, and you mentioned that there was discussion of who the operator would be. So I'd be interested in who the operator is at this moment.
Uh, Brooklyn Fair is the operator.
What's her name?
Brooklyn Fair Market.
Aren't they a co-op?
I believe so, yes.
You know it?
They're cooperative market, excuse me, I'm sorry, out of turn. Um, cooperative market, and I know of them only because we've tried to engage them in some of our projects.
And do they, is this their normal-sized supermarket they deal with as a cooperative supermarket, or would they do a bigger one?
When, when the applicant approached us, uh, early on in this, they were, you know, looking at both sides, so being able to look at, to take on advantage of the entire twenty thousand in their environmental impact statement, uh, E S, environmental assessment statement, uh, or the, the smaller scale, depending on who they were able to attract in the, in, for the space. And I believe, you know, Brooklyn Fair is a little more of like the smaller-scale, uh, operator, but I can have the applicant definitely respond to these questions.
Okay, 'cause I think the size may also be related to the fact that they're only gonna have one loading dock, and so if they had a twenty thousand square foot supermarket, they would need more than one loading dock, and so I'm not sure what's driving the size, but I fear that it's not what the community, what's driving it is not what the community would need for a full-service supermarket, but rather the developers' concerns, and that's problematic for me.
Noted. Uh, I just wanted to point out, we don't have, I mean, the data for all of the supermarkets or the, uh, you know, retail areas on it. There, there is the, you know, saturation analysis that we do internally, but that is only comparing, uh, fresh food stores within the half a mile, uh, half a mile radius. You know, in this case, there's only one additional fresh food store in the area, in the area that is located on their avenue, you know, about like three, four blocks south of where this, oh, I'm sorry, three, four blocks, yeah, south where this development will be located. And that essentially gener- like allows the applicant or the, any other application that will propose in a fresh to have an additional twenty-seven thousand square footage of available fresh food area.
Right. But you can see my concern is just that six thousand square feet is not, for the third of a mile, is not a, a lot of supermarket for this community, which has suffered in the past from a lack of sufficient choices in their marketing, um, and since two thousand and fifteen, when the Pathmark closed, has continued to suffer. I know that small little stores have opened, as have stands with fruit and other things, but that's not the best we can do, and maybe we need to look at, looking at all the food resources within a third of a mile, not just the fresh supermarkets, to get an idea of what is really available. And with all of the people we're adding in this building, what is really available to the community as shopping resources?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Marine.
Sir, thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to echo all the statements that have been made by my colleagues, 'cause I too opine that this is very tiny. I mean, I, I go into six thousand square foot city town where I live, and the aisles are cramped, you don't have good selection, and the food's not always fresh, um, to be honest with you. And we also have to consider the fact that, you know, you have the Column Cultural Center, which is right down on Second Avenue, which is, is not fully built out yet, it's gonna get built out. And we also have to consider the Bronx, because Westerners of the Bronx would come into Pathmark, and I would specifically come into Pathmark before a Pathmark was created in the Bronx, and now it's gone. I will also echo, uh, Commissioner Benjamin's thoughts on, on Wegman shop rights, they're the same company, they're bringing in Wegmans to the city, they want Wegmans to be known. This is a prime location where there's subway, where there's a lot of folks, and the applicant, I also heard you said the applicant, or maybe the operator, was not experienced with a larger market. So maybe what they need to do is find the right operator and not try to shoehorn a smaller operator into a space that is not gonna serve the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Buzo.
Um, I mean, if, if Brooklyn Fair really is part of the project, I think it would be interesting to hear from them through this process, because I do think there's real value to supporting a worker-owned cooperative model that might be trying to grow throughout the city, and that could be considered within the overall development as a, you know, a benefit or a, a good that's being provided here, if they're not able to provide, um, or not able to operate something larger, or maybe they wanna operate something larger and grow even further. We'd be, I'd be curious to hear. Um, I do think it's, it's interesting if this project's able to support the growth of a, you know, worker-owned food co-op.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sario.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm, this is for later, uh, but I'm wondering if, uh, when we see this again, we can see a little more information on how the applicant plans to address the projected, uh, sea level rise, uh, potential coastal inundation here. I see it on the maps that it will be subject to, according to projections, not now, but according to projections. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Now, uh, Ryan, this is, um, let, let's talk about the, the procedural posture of this particular one.
Sure. So this is, this is an authorization, um, it was, uh, typically we refer these out, uh, uh, we show them to you and then refer them out. What we did here, we're trying to pilot, is we referred it out to the community board so you would have that in, uh, input, and then we brought it to, to the commission. Um, it looks like here that we have, and the applicant has some work to do. There is no hearing on this, so the applicant will respond in writing and, uh, with, through, through Jose, and we can bring it back at the next review session for discussion. Um, I do not get the sense that we're ready to vote on this, so I think we'll, uh, hold off on scheduling it for a vote, and we'll get comfortable and then we'll.
Good. So we will do follow-ups based on the questions that were raised today. Uh, we will, we'll do a post, uh, conversation follow-up before we, uh, we move to schedule anything. So thank you, Jose, for your, uh, for your work on this, Ryan, for that explanation, and thanks, everybody, for the very, very good questions. So with that, uh, let us move on to our next item. Ryan?
Yep. The fifth item on our agenda is a referral of the zoning authorization in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is the new Deputy Director of the Brooklyn Office, Corinza Wood.
Hooray. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, today I'll be presenting an application for Greenpoint Landing Parcel five C two. This is an application by Greenpoint River View Associates LLC to facilitate the development of five to six, um, mixed-use primarily residential buildings in approximately two-point-two acres of waterfront public access areas at the Greenpoint Landing Project site in Greenpoint, Community District One, Brooklyn. To facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking two waterfront authorizations to modify the underlying waterfront public access area, or W P A A regulations, as well as two chair certifications, a waterfront certification and a certification for phased development. Here's an aerial view looking north. The project area is located in northern Greenpoint along the East River waterfront. The surrounding area includes a mix of residential apartment buildings, row houses and waterfront towers, as well as warehouse buildings with commercial or industrial uses, and waterfront parks and open spaces. The area to the north of the project area is the remainder of the Greenpoint Landing project, and west of the site is the East River. There are concentrations of neighborhood retail uses along West Street, Franklin Street, and Manhattan Avenue. There are several parks in the area, including the recently constructed Newtown Barge Park located to the north along Newtown Creek. The Greenpoint Playground is located just east of the project area. Transmitter Park is located a few blocks south, and further south is the future site of the Bushwick Inlet Park. The surrounding area is served by several transit options. The nearest subway station is the Greenpoint Avenue Station at the G subway line with entrances on Greenpoint Avenue and India Street. Bus lines in the vicinity include the B sixty-two, which runs north-south along Manhattan Avenue towards Queens and downtown Brooklyn. The B forty-three runs north-south along Manhattan Avenue from Greenpoint through central Brooklyn, and the B twenty-four runs east-west along Greenpoint Avenue to Queens and Williamsburg. The East River Ferry has a stop at the India Street Pier and provides service to Manhattan, Queens, and Brooklyn. There are also two industrial business zones in the area, the Greenpoint-Williamsburg IBZ to the south and the North Brooklyn IBZ to the east. Zooming in, now looking east to get a better sense of the project area, you can see that this is the southernmost parcel of the Greenpoint Landing site. Greenpoint Landing spans approximately half a mile of the East River, um, and is roughly bounded by Newtown Creek to the north, Western Commercial Streets to the east, Huron Streets to the south, and the East River to the west. Further south of the Greenpoint Landing site, there are several recently approved and completed projects. A certification for the one Huron Street, uh, project was granted in two thousand and nineteen and is currently under construction. One Java Street was granted authorization for modifications to waterfront regulations in two thousand and twenty-one, and one fifty-five West Street, a thirty-nine-story residential building and its twenty-two thousand square foot waterfront esplanade, was the first Greenpoint waterfront development constructed. In two thousand and five, nearly two hundred blocks in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg neighborhoods, including the project area, were rezoned from primarily manufacturing districts and older mixed-use districts to a mix of residential and mixed-use districts as part of the city-sponsored Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning. The Greenpoint waterfront was mapped with a blend of R eight and R six districts with C two-four overlays along portions of West Street permitting residential and commercial uses and facilitating the development of waterfront public access areas. Under special rules for this area established by the two thousand and five rezoning, the R six and R eight districts, maps on each site blend to permit, um, residential uses to an F A R of approximately three-point-seven, which could be increased to four-point-seven under the voluntary inclusionary housing program. The R six and R eight boundaries were drawn to permit high-rise towers within the R eight districts towards the water and lower development toward the upland neighborhood. As part of the two thousand and five rezoning, the Greenpoint-Williamsburg Waterfront Access Plan, or W A P, was established and designated twenty-seven individual parcels along the waterfront, each with different regulations and, which identify the location of different types of open spaces and visual corridors along the waterfront. The development site itself is, uh, zoned as a mix of R six and R eight districts with a C two-four commercial overlay along a portion of the site. C two-four commercial overlays permit up to two-point-oh F A R for commercial uses. The upland blocks are mapped with R six B districts and M one-two R six A and M one-two R six B districts within the M X eight special mixed-use district. The M X districts permit, uh, a mix of light manufacturing, commercial, and residential uses. These areas contain residential, mixed residential and commercial buildings that are two to six stories in height, as well as industrial and loft buildings between one and three stories in height. The areas to the south include waterfront sites in various states of development. In terms of flood risk, the project area is located in the one percent and point-two annual chance flood zone. Seaward portions are predominantly within the V zone or velocity zone. The proposed development site is the last parcel within the broader Greenpoint Landing master plan. Approved in two thousand and thirteen, the Greenpoint Landing application included a U D A P disposition of city-owned property, zoning tax amendments, waterfront certifications, and authorizations. When fully built out, Greenpoint Landing will include approximately fifty-five hundred dwelling units, of which at least fourteen hundred will be income-restricted, and will also include ground-floor retail space, approximately eighteen hundred accessory parking spaces, and will also include, um, uh, four acres of publicly accessible open space. When complete, Greenpoint Landing will provide an open-space network that will include a connected forty-foot shore public walkway, upland connections, and varied programming along the waterfront. There have been various, numerous follow-up app, app, applications to facilitate the development and waterfront access on these sites. The project, uh, area here is outlined. Immediately to the north of the development site is parcel five B one five C one, which includes two residential towers and an approximately forty-nine thousand five hundred square foot W P A A. Parcel five E is a city-owned site in the location of Newtown Barge Park. To the northeast of the park is parcel five A, which includes two one-hundred percent income-restricted residential buildings along Commercial Street and two residential towers on the waterfront. An additional waterfront tower and a one-hundred percent income-restricted building are currently under construction, um, on the easternmost portion of the parcel. The entire, um, approximately fifty-five thousand square feet of W P A A in parcel five A has been constructed and is open to the public. Greenpoint Landing also includes a portion of the block on the east side of West Street between Dupont Street and Eagle Street designated as parcel five B two five D. The southwestern corner of the block is improved with a one-hundred percent income-restricted building, and a forty-story mixed-use residential building is currently under construction on the northern portion of the block. The development site comprises zoning lot five C two and parcel five C of the W A P and forms the southern portion of the Greenpoint Landing area. It is located between Eagle Street to the north, the midpoint of Green and Huron Streets to the south, and West Street to the east. The development site has a seaward area of approximately three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand square feet and an upland area of approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand square feet, and includes the site of the former Green Street Pier and existing pier under the zoning resolution. Parcel five C in the W A P specifies that two upland connections and visual corridors are required, one at Eagle Street and the other at Green Street. The development site is paved but otherwise unimproved and is presently being used for vehicle and equipment storage. Its current use will be discontinued upon redevelopment. So here are some photos of the site. This is a view from the intersection of Eagle and West Streets, looking west down the Eagle Street upland connection on parcel five B one five C one. This is a view southeast from the upland connection looking towards the development site. This is a view looking, um, up, north-up West Street with five B one on the left, the development on parcel five B two five D on the right, and then further north, there's a portion of the development of parcel five A further on the right. And this is a view looking down West Street from the intersection of Eagle and West Street. And this is a view looking down, or looking east down Eagle Street with the parcel five D development on the left. This is a view looking further south down West Street with upland buildings on the left and the development site on the right. This is a view from the intersection of Freeman and West Streets, looking west at the development site. And this is a view from the intersection of Freeman and West Streets, looking west, oh, sorry, at the, at the intersection of Green and West Streets, looking west towards the southern edge of the development site. This is a view from that same intersection, looking further south, um, towards the one Huron development in the background. And this is a view, um, from Green Street, looking northwest across the development site with parcel five B one in the background. And this is a photo of the development site, looking towards the East River, and this is also on the development site, looking across towards northern Greenpoint. The applicant proposes to construct multiple as of right, primarily residential buildings on the development site. In connection with the construction of these buildings, the applicant will provide required W P A A. As part of the W A P, locations and requirements for visual corridors, upland connections, supplemental access areas, and pier access are specified. This is an overview of the proposed site plan and W P A A layout. Key components of the waterfront proposal include a new Green Street Pier, a waterfront esplanade, multiple seating areas, paths to get closer to the waterfront, and a lawn. The proposed development will incorporate best practices for shoreline resiliency. The ground floors of the building will be located above the one percent annual chance flood zone, um, and the flood-resistant construction elevation. The waterfront upland connections and supplemental public access areas and adjoining access points will be graded to allow direct access to, um, to. will be graded to allow direct access to front doors down to the shoreline. The W P A A will include the planting of native plant species which require less maintenance and will also include constructing a soft sloping shoreline edge made of riprap with riparian plant species interspersed between stones, which facilitate the creation and viability of microhabitats for birds and fish. Pursuant to the W P A A requirements and based on a lot area inclusive of the area of the Green Street Pier, waterfront regulations require a minimum of approximately seventy-five-thousand square feet of W P A A. In addition, waterfront area attributable attributable to parcel five D on the east side of West Street must also be provided, including forty-two hundred square feet required to be located on the development site for a total waterfront access requirement of approximately eighty thousand square feet. The proposed development exceeds this requirement with a W P A A of approximately ninety-six-thousand square feet consisting of several elements. A forty-foot shore public walkway would extend from Eagle Street to Green Street and have an area of approximately twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet. Two additional supplemental public access areas would have a combined area of eleven-thousand seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, one of which would be located at the intersection of the shore public walkway and Freeman Street and the other would be located at the intersection of shore public walkway and Green Street, which is required by the WAP. The southern half of Eagle Street would be constructed as an upland connection, thereby completing the Eagle Street upland connection as the northern half of the upland connection is located on zoning lot five B one five C one. The W P A A would also include an upland connection along Green Street providing pedestrian access to the shore public walkway and Green Street Pier from West Street. The total area of the two upland connections on the development site would be thirty-three-thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet and both upland connections would be maintained as visual corridors as required by zoning. The Green Street Pier would be reconstructed and its entire twenty-two-thousand square foot area would be used for waterfront access. Although not an upland connection, a connection would be provided at Freeman Street and sidewalks would be designated as public access areas. The W P A A complies with all waterfront regulations other than modified by the requested So starting at the northern edge of the site, this is a view of the Meadow Walk, which serves as a secondary pathway through the W P A A and includes picnic areas between the shore public walkway and the walkway. Further south, this is the Freeman Street Connection, which mitigates the elevation of the upper portion of the site with the lower elevation of the W P A A through a series of switchbacks, a lawn would be located to the north of this path. The south of Freeman Street, this is a typical section of the W P A A, which demonstrates the elevated shore public walkway, seating and a buffer area between the W P A A and the residential building. At the southern end of the W P A A, there will be a large oval lawn lined with seating and seating steps will be constructed along the water's edge. A six-foot wide planted buffer area will separate the public walkways and seating areas from the private terraces of the adjacent buildings. And finally, this is an image of the proposed Green Street Pier, which will include shaded areas and multiple types of seating. So in order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is seeking two authorizations, one to modify requirements for location, area and minimum dimensions of W P A A and visual corridors, and another to modify design requirements for W P A A. The applicant is requesting a waterfront authorization pursuant to Z R sixty-two eight two two A to modify Z R section sixty-two dash thirty and sixty-two dash fifty to address future flooding concerns and to respond to the unique geography of the site. The requested modifications include, one, a reduction in the width of the proposed circulation path within fifteen feet of a shared lot line. A Z R section sixty-two three three two B two I states that the level of the waterfront yard may be raised to a higher elevation, provided that the level of the waterfront yard within fifteen feet of the shared lot line does not exceed three feet above the level of the adjoining street public park or W P A A and that the width of the circulation path at that lot line is greater than that required by Z R section sixty-two sixty-two A, which is twelve feet. The proposed development would not meet this latter requirement for a wider circulation path in order to facilitate a seamless transition to the circulation path on five B one to the north. And the second waiver is to the level of the visual corridor. Z R sixty-two five one two states that the lowest level of a visual corridor shall be determined by establishing a plane between the curb and natural shoreline or bulkhead. The proposed development would increase the grade of the visual corridor to account for building entrances elevated above the one percent annual chance flood plane. The level of the visual corridor permitted on Eagle Street runs from eight point seven feet at the stabilized natural shore to an elevation of fifteen point nine feet, five feet above the curb elevation at Eagle Street. The level of the proposed visual corridor at Eagle Street would range from twelve point five feet to a highest point of seventeen point five feet. And on Green Street, the level of the visual corridor permitted ranges from five point three feet at the stabilized natural shore to an elevation of thirteen point three five feet, five feet above the curb elevation at Green Street. The level of the proposed visual corridor in Green Street would range from the street elevation of eight point three five feet to a high point of eighteen feet. The applicant is requesting a waterfront authorization pursuant to Z R sixty-two eight two two B to reduce the required amount of continuous tree pits and alter wall heights. Z R sixty-two sixty-four C requires that for type-two upland connections, a continuous tree pit be provided with one tree for every twenty-five feet, a private driveway frontage. Based on the driveway length for every twenty, with, sorry, based on the driveway length of each upland connection, nine trees are required on the southern side of the Eagle Street driveway and sixteen trees are required on each side of the Green Street driveway. The proposed development would provide seven trees on the south side of Eagle Street, fourteen trees on the north side of Green Street and eleven trees on the south side of Green Street. This reduction is requested due to required Con Edison utility vaults that will occupy a portion of sidewalks, restricting the area available for tree planting. Outside of the portions of the sidewalks used by required utility vaults and building entrances, plant tree, sorry, plant tree space approximately twenty-five feet apart would be provided, providing a functionally equivalent design. And then two, for Z R sixty-two six five one C three, it prohibits walls to exceed a height of twenty-one inches. The proposed development would include walls between the W P A A and the terraces of the adjacent buildings that have heights between zero and six feet. The wall height addresses grade changes between W P A A and the private buildings. This wall would provide a continuation of vegetative design of the W P A A on a cable trellis with vines and a six-foot buffer of additional trees and shrubbery planted adjacent to the wall. And that is the end of the presentation. Happy to take questions.
Great, thank you very much, Corinza, and congratulations again to you and your new role. Well deserved. Let me just run through a couple of the details that you noted. So we've got two different authorizations, one of them that starts here and ends at the council and one of them that starts and ends here at the City Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct.
The first one is the proposed changes for the level of the waterfront yard and the elevation of the visual corridor, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. On the level of the waterfront yard, so as I understand this, and this is really just for clarification purposes and I think we've got it, but, so you are able to elevate your lot if you're within fifteen feet of a shared lot line? And if you want to be able to elevate it to the grade next door, you can, you can do that, provided that the width of your path is at least twelve feet, is that right?
Greater than what's required, which is twelve feet.
Okay. And here they're proposing twelve, but not greater than twelve?
That's right.
Therefore, they need an authorization that allows them to stop at twelve?
That's right.
Okay. And on the, and the visual corridor, I think, was, was clear enough. On the, the tree requirements, the changes on Eagle and Green Street, the rationale for the reduction in the number of trees that are required under the existing rules and why they want the authorization for change is related to Con Edison. Can you say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, that's right. They don't have the exact location of where these utility vaults will be, but this is based on other projects that they've developed in the area and anticipated location of those vaults. So this will accommodate and give the developers some flexibility on where those vaults can be located.
Okay, got it. And then the last one is the max wall height of twenty-one inches and they, they're proposing a range here. And what is the, what is the purpose of a wall height that is beyond twenty-one inches here and what is the implication for this site?
That's right. And so you'll see here, there's an interaction between the W, the public W P A A and the private terraces. In gray, these are the towers and in light gray, to the westward side, those are private terraces and so there is a wall between these two private and public spaces, right? And so there are different regulations in the W P A As that require buffers and, and in the spirit of kind of mitigating the additional height that these buildings are being built to to get out of the flood zone, inherently these terraces are taller. And so the applicant is proposing various mitigations to mitigate the impact of these walls, including providing this trellis, a planted trellis. And in some sections, you can see the callout here, the landscape will be burned up to also mitigate the overall height of the wall.
Okay. And then the last question for me is, on Freeman Street, I know that you had cited the upland connection on Eagle and Green Streets, but on Freeman, it is, there's, it's not an upland, it's not officially designated as an upland connection and yet you will be able to get to the waterfront from Freeman Street. Can you just explain the distinction between the public access area as it relates to Freeman Street and what we are seeing in terms of official upland connections on each of the other two streets in this map?
Absolutely. So the two upland connections, Eagle Street and Green Street, were designated as part of the Greenpoint-Williamsburg WAP, which outlined where all the upland connections would be over the entire waterfront. Freeman Street was not one of them. And so those are codified within the W P A A certifications and open spaces. However, as part of considering, you know, a site plan for this large parcel, the applicant is proposing another connection through the site to bring people into the waterfront public access areas, and that's Freeman Street. And even though it's not a required W P A, they don't need this additional area to meet the minimum requirements of a W P A A. In order for this to function like a public space, the applicant is going to ensure that the sidewalks here are essentially function like a W P A A and they'll be accessible to the public. The streetbed itself will not be designated, but the sidewalks will be. And so those will be open to the public at the same hours as the W P A A.
Great, terrific. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, sir. Corinza, thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question, I mean, it sort of kind of yells obviousness here, was, when the WAP was created originally, were the only two streets intended to be here Eagle and Green and was Freeman added later, which is why it's not part of the WAP?
So I don't know the exact answer as to why Freeman wasn't considered, but when considering the location of visual corridors, we have requirements around that are often six hundred feet between visual corridors. So I can get back to you with a more specific answer, but my understanding is that this was in part to kind of reflect our standard approach to creating visual corridors and upland connections and that perhaps a third one in the middle is not sort of our standard approach to defining where these locations should be.
I was just trying to figure out the thought process, maybe, what I was saying, maybe the city thought of this as one block that was going to be built in its entirety, but you've given me a rationale of the six hundred feet, which makes sense, but I do think the introduction of that third one in the middle does make all the sense in the world. Thank you, I appreciate the insistence.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin, Commissioner.
Question on the design, I know it's not required, but this isn't a whole lot of space being provided and I was just wondering if there was any thought to some active recreation space. We're adding whole new populations here and in these buildings and none of the space that is provided as part of the WAP is active recreation. I mean, I guess you could say that people can run on this space, but in terms of populations of children and young adults, there's not a lot other than seating.
It's a, it's a good question. When the, when this was being developed, there was a push from the community for more naturalistic spaces. If you look at some of the other waterfront spaces along the Greenpoint-Williamsburg waterfront, you know, we have a lot of hard edges that really comply with waterfront zoning. And so the intent here was to create more of a kind of a natural experience, again, kind of based on feedback from the community. There are certainly other parks in the neighborhood, for example Newtown Barge Park has a baseball field and so that, you know, nearby is part of the master plan. So that's, again, this is in part in response to the, kind of the goals of the community had for one of the last parts, well, really the last parcel of the Greenpoint Landing site.
Okay, because particularly in looking at the oval in the southern part of the site, that is going to just have benches and a lawn, it just seems that a tot lot or something for children to play would just, is wanting to be put there.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, this will go back to the community board for their inputs, so it'll be interesting to see how these conversations will evolve as part of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you and congratulations again. I had a couple of questions and thanks for the presentation, I thought it was really useful. I just wanted to ask apologies if I missed it, but is there a map where we can see an overlay of the velocity zone and the W P A A? The reason why I ask is because this, this strikes to me as a case where we shouldn't just be looking at flooding like horizontally, but actually accounting for wave action. And so I want to understand a little bit, sort of like, given the, the high vulnerability of the site to inundation, how does that relate to storm surge? And along those lines, I would like to know if you can clarify also whether the coastline is being modified or whether it's being maintained. That'll help me understand a little bit, sort of like the tree, the discussion about the tree requirements.
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't have unfortunately a map right now with that overlay, if we go back to the map. Okay, here we go. So you can see for the most part, it looks as though there's a small portion within the V zone in the north, but the rest of the site is outside of it, though of course the pier would be within that zone as well. And, you know, can talk to the applicant too about things that they're considering for the pier in regards to this issue. And then in terms of the coastline, I don't believe they're modifying it, but I will confirm.
Thank you. One, one other quick question, I also wanted to know if, does the W R P or the W P A, in fact, create, contain, include any provisions associated with evacuation purposes of, in terms of, within the discussion of open, of waterfront access, just because this is also, I think, Zone One and Two evacuation, this is a Zone One Two, sort of like top evacuation area by Department of Emergency Management. So I'm just wondering if that has permeated or if we can discuss that and/or specifically interested if, if there are any provisions in the W R P that could help you, help us with this.
So I will say this is a type-two action, which did not require W R P, but that's certainly something that we can talk to the applicant about and do some more thinking about during this referral period.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's see if there are other questions here. Okay, thank you, Corinza. We will refer this one out to the community board and we appreciate the detail of the presentation today. Thanks again. Okay, Ryan?
Okay, for future votes, for consideration later today, Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, we have twenty-five sixty Boston Road rezoning, just noting that staff has recommended approval of this important housing opportunity in an area of the city with good transit access and little recent new housing development. On, we also have one fifty-five Eighteenth Street authorization and Juki Sai is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Guinea Pig Holdings, represented by Opera, sorry, by Opera Studio Architecture, for a zoning authorization pursuant to Z R forty-two forty-seven to facilitate the construction of a new three-family residence in an M one-two D district at one five five Eighteenth Street in South Park Slope, Brooklyn, Community District Seven. The post-referral hearing for this project was held on February twenty-seventh. On March fifteenth, Community Board Seven held an informal vote on this project and it passed with thirty-five yes votes and one no vote. The proposed action will not change the existing land use on the lot and if passed, it will result in one additional residential unit. The department supports the land use rationale of this proposed project. I'd like to share a couple responses to questions from our Commissioners in the last hearing. Regarding the current tenant status, there are two apartments and each have Regarding the current tenant status, there are two apartments, and each have rental tenants paying market rate rents. Their year-long leases are expired, and they are on a month-to-month arrangement. They've agreed with the landlords to move out on April thirtieth. The proposed development will also, excuse me, will have two rental apartments in addition to the owner's duplex unit, if passed. And regarding the one-ninety-seven-A plan, so a little bit of background on it, the Sunset Park one-ninety-seven-A plan was sponsored by Brooklyn Community Board Seven and prepared in two thousand and seven. It sets forth a comprehensive framework for the revitalization of the Sunset Park waterfront as an economically viable and environmentally sustainable resource that is closely related to and serves the needs of the adjacent upland communities. Notably, the Sunset Park one-ninety-seven-A plan does not include provisions about converting existing residential to commercial or manufacturing. And noting here that one-five-five-eighteenth Street is actually east of Third Avenue, uh, the one-ninety-seven-A plan does call for comprehensive housing, excuse me, a comprehensive housing preservation program for the M-one-two-D and R districts west of Third Avenue, aimed at encouraging rehabilitation and improvement of existing housing stock. And I just included that because it makes mention of the M-one-two-D districts in this neighborhood. And thank you, that's what I have on this application.
Great, thank you very much, Juki. Let me see if there are any questions for you? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Ryan, what's next?
Okay, um, Juki has the next one, it's eighty-eight Third Avenue, the HRA lease extension.
Welcome back, Juki, it's been a while.
Long time. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hello. This is an application for a one-ninety-five notice of intent to acquire office space action, jointly sought by HRA and DCAST to facilitate the renewal of a lease for approximately ninety-seven-thousand square feet of office space currently being used by HRA at eighty-eight Third Avenue in Borum Hill, Community District Two, Brooklyn. The pre-hearing review session for this project took place on March thirteenth, and the CPC public hearing for it took place on March fifteenth. The department supports this application. Renewing the lease at eighty-eight Third Avenue would ensure that HRA has a centrally-located, ADA-accessible office space to conduct business from until their facility, excuse me, until the facility they plan to move to at twenty-four-forty Fulton Street is available for tenancy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Move on to the next.
All right.
Thank you, Juki.
We have, uh, one-forty-one, oh-five, one-oh-ninth Avenue rezoning, um, noting that Commissioner Rampershad is recused, and that staff is recommending approval for this thoughtful increase in housing capacity in this neighborhood.
Great.
For, uh, post-hearing follow-ups, uh, the Coal Street development, I believe Amy Obanaga is on the Zoom for discussion.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Department of City Planning supports the applicant's proposal for a city mapping action to facilitate development of one-hundred-and-one units within the Richmond Valley neighborhood of Community District Three on Staten Island. The city mapping action would include the extension of Coal Street and the establishment of Blue Belt Loop, Cool Court, and Lookout Court, as well as the adjustments of grades necessitated thereby, including the authorization for any acquisition or disposition of real property related thereto in accordance with map number thirty-two-D. The application also includes CPC authorizations, uh, per zoning resolution one-oh-seven dash sixty-four and zoning resolution one-oh-seven sixty-five for tree removal and topographic modification, as well as CPC certifications for one-oh-seven oh-eight and one-oh-seven one-twenty-one for future subdivision and public school seats, which the Department of City Planning staff also supports. Also noted that the Community Board Number Three on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-three unanimously approved the city mapping action. That concludes.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Ryan?
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, sixty-one-ten Queens Boulevard rezoning, uh, Shri Basrichara Shaka is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Chair Grotnick and Commissioners. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map from a C-one-two commercial overlay to a C-two-four commercial overlay over the existing R-seven-one and R-six zoning districts to facilitate the use of a sixteen-thousand square feet of gym, which would be located on the second floor of the existing two-story commercial building. The R-two-four commercial overlay would provide more flexibility in permitted uses within the project area and would be consistent with the commercial character of the surrounding area, as well as serve residents in the Big Six complex.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. And, uh, twenty-six-fifty Brooklyn Queens Expressway West rezoning, and Sarah Avila will, uh, discuss.
Good afternoon, Chair Grotnick and Commissioners. This is a post-hearing follow-up and staff recommendation for twenty-six-fifty Brooklyn Queens Expressway rezoning. As a reminder, this project had a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This is a private application by twenty-six-fifty BQE LOR LLC for a zoning map amendment, uh, to rezon block ten-nineteen lots one and two from an M-one-one zoning district to an M-one-two zoning district, to facilitate the enlargement and an ex, an expansion to an existing physical cultural establishment in the Woodside neighborhood of Queens, Community District One. The proposed development will be a three-story building with a mezzanine, approximately fifty-six-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-two square feet, and have an FAR one-point-three-one. Max hundred, the M-one-two, uh, proposed zoning district is, uh, two-point-oh. The development, uh, the department recommends approval of the application as it would allow for a moderately higher density, non-residential development in a primary, primarily commercial and industrial area. The current M-one-one zoning precludes a future expansion due to the labable floor area. The proposed M-one-two zoning district will enhance and reinforce the industrial and commercial character of the area. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, that's the end of our review session.
Great.
You want me to open the, uh?
Let's do it. So we will, uh, we will close the, uh, the review session, and we will open our special public meeting of today, Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Ryan, do you want to do the honors?
Yes. Good afternoon, this is the City Planning Commission's special public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person at the City Planning Commission Hearing Room, one-Townee Broadway, Lower Manhattan. Today is Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. I will now call the role Chair Grotnick.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Here.
Commissioner Kamani.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Uh, on the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, March fifteenth. Is there a second? Commissioner Rampershad, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes approved.
Okay, scheduling, uh, calendar number one is laid over. On calendar number two, we have a resolution for adoption scheduling Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, for a public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great, thank you. April twelfth, can you believe it? April. There it is. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve, uh, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Marine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolution's adopted.
All right. The next item is the report section on page four, Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers three and four, uh, CD eleven, calendar number three, C-two-two-zero-two-eight-three-ZMX, calendar number four, N-two-two-zero-two-eight-four-ZRX. In the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning twenty-five-sixty Boston Road rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers three and four, Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers three and four. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number five, uh, CD seven, N-two-three-zero-zero-eight-eight-ZAK. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning one-five-five Eighteenth Street for the adoption of calendar number five, Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
No. Uh, I, the reason why I would know is because the purpose of the M-one-two-D is to maintain residential uses in industrial areas. I think that expanding residential uses, we are increasing the FAR through new buildings, which is another important, uh, component here, actually changes the context of industrial areas, which is a central part of the criteria for evaluation. So increasing residential here would set a precedent in a community that has set green industrial development as a paramount priority. Although this is a small proposal, it is difficult to authorize it without additional information, like for example, how many authorizations for new residential buildings have taken place in M-one-two-D districts? How will the process address direct displacement of the current residents? I know that we're talking about two families, but these are two families that are going to have to move once the building is demolished. And also, as I've mentioned before, this is listed as Greenwood, Greenwood Heights in page, on page number four of the briefing package, but this keeps being presented to us as South Park Slope. So what is going to happen to the residents once the new building reflects, uh, Park Slope rent prices?
Commissioner Rampershad, yes. Calendar number five has been adopted, Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number, uh, calendar number six, uh, CD two, N-two-three-zero-one-zero-seven-PXK. In the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning eighty-eight Third Avenue Human Resources Administration lease extension, for favorable reports on calendar number six, Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell. Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge. Commissioner Kamani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number six. Borough of Queens, calendar number seven and eight, CD twelve, calendar number seven, C-two-two-zero-two-six-seven-ZMQ, calendar number eight, N-two-two-zero-two-six-eight-ZRQ. In the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning one-forty-one, oh-five, one-oh-ninth Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar number seven and eight, Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo. Commissioner Crowell.[1762.04]